I will call this Board of Aldermen meeting to order. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, could I have a rule call, please?
Alderman Bowman.
Present.
Alderman Bockelman.
Here.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
Alderman Long. Absent. Alderman Turner.
Here.
And Alderman Levison.
Here.
And Mayor Hassick.
Here, and we do have a quorum. Good evening, everyone. Alderman Long did contact me. He has got strep throat. I asked him to please not come and share that with the rest of us, so he will not be here this evening. First off tonight, we do have a ceremonial matter. We do have some members of the MPUA here with us. Mr. Patterson, would you like to do the intro?
Sure. MPUA is the power group we belong to, so we purchase our power through, plus we just have a little benefit. It's one of the benefits being we're eligible for some grant money, which is why they're here. They'll give a little explanation on that and take a picture if you guys come down after also.
Okay, very good.
Good evening, Mayor and Aldermen and women. My name is Jewel Lawson. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs and Member Relations, as well as the Chief Operating Officer for the Missouri Public Utility Alliance. First, I'd like to congratulate Eric and his electric staff on maintaining something we call RP3 status. I don't know if you all have heard of RP3, but that stands for Reliable Public Power Provider. And Harrisonville is among, you may or may not know that Harrisonville is among only 118 utilities nationwide, out of more than 2,000 utilities nationwide, to earn this designation that recognizes them in its reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. This means your utility is one of the most reliable utilities in the nation. And why is that important? It means that your outages or your customers lose power less often. And studies show that customers in utilities like Harrisonville are without power for just 59 minutes a year compared to private investor-owned utilities that are out double that. So, congrats to Harrisonville for being one of the best of the best. MPUA, a little bit about us, we're a multifaceted organization of over 110 municipal utilities across Missouri, which provide water, wastewater, natural gas, electric, and broadband services, including the operation of Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission. We refer to that commission as the acronym of MUDJMUC. You may have heard of MUDJMUC. But namely, I'm here today to talk to you about a service that MUDJMUC operates for 35 cities, which provides wholesale electric supply to the city of Harrisonville. And that's called the Missouri Public Energy Pool, otherwise known as MoPEP. So, I'm educating you on all the acronyms today and alphabet today of all the acronyms that we engage in. But over the last couple of years, MPUA has worked to improve the internal operations of MUDJMUC. This work has led to enhanced credit worthiness. And in the last three years, MUDJMUC's been able to refund some of its bond holding on power projects, such as IOTAN 2 with Kansas City Power and Light, Plum Point Prairie State, and some other MoPEP-specific projects, and garner an enhanced credit rating with our rating agencies. This has been done to a tune of over a billion dollars of refinanced bonds. And for MoPEP, this has an annual impact of $2.4 million annually, which directly impacts your rates, the city's rates, in their wholesale supply. So now, the focus, after we've been working on that, the focus has now turned to you and the cities within that power pool. And we are trying to improve the local infrastructure in our MoPEP cities. And not only does this help the individual city, but the credit worthiness of the group that is in its, by the group of energy. So today, I'm pleased to announce that MUDJMUC and the MoPEP cities are awarding Harrisonville an additional $116,550 to complete transmission and distribution upgrades that improve the city's electric system. This totals roughly, well, exactly, $208,361 in grant funds that we've given to Harrisonville over the last couple of years. The previous award of $91,811 was for new fiber to improve the electric system's communication networks. And both these grants directly impact the reliability of the city's local system, as well as improve the credit worthiness of the greater pool. So that's basically a win-win for both the individual city and for the power pool collectively. The other thing I was asked to mention tonight was, you may or may not know that MPUA operates a mutual aid program. And that program is, who sent the crews from Higginsville and Carthage to Harrisonville a week and a half ago to help get back up and going in that weather event that you had? But I wanted to point out that Harrisonville has a long history of participating in that mutual aid program. They've sent line workers to other communities around the state, and we're very appreciative of that. And they've also sent line workers to other states to help out. And that's always an important part of being part of a public power community. And we're very pleased and appreciative of Harrisonville's activities in that. Tonight, I have Mark Mustaine, who's here with us. He's the Line Worker Training and Mutual Aid Coordinator. He also trains some of your linemen here at Harrisonville. But if you have any questions about mutual aid, the two of us would be happy to answer any of those questions. But tonight, thank you for your leadership here in Harrisonville. And as you know, having a municipal utility has important benefits to the community, including higher liability, service responsiveness, local control, affordable electric rates, improved economic development choices. So keep up the good work here in Higginsville, and again, congratulations.
Harrisonville.
Did I say Higginsville more than once?
No.
We sent municipal people here to help Harrison.
There we go.
So I very much apologize.
That's okay.
But let me make that up and give you a check for $160,000.
Funny how that helps.
I will say Harrisonville one more time to get the check right. The check is made out there.
Well, that's good.
That was a good question. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Eric. Were there any questions about mutual aid or any of the activities that happened over the last about a week and a half ago on mutual aid?
Any questions?
I am in Harrisonville, and we did send Higginsville people here, as well as Carthage people. And again, we very much appreciate Harrisonville and all the aspects of utility operations that we do. And again, mutual aid is a very important element of that, and we were glad to come here and help out. And we're also appreciative of the crews that Harrisonville often lends to other communities around the state and other states.
Pay it forward, right?
That's right. Thank you, Senator.
All right, thank you. All right, very good. That concludes our ceremonial matters tonight. At this time, I will open the floor to public participation. Anybody who has anything to bring before this board that is not on our already scheduled agenda, please feel free to step to the podium. Just be sure to share your name and address with our clerk. He's behind you, actually, over here. He's normally over there. Good evening.
Hi, I just want to make a quick disclaimer that this subject's a really sensitive one for some people. Obviously, it means a lot to me, otherwise I wouldn't be here. So I just want to kind of give you that warning, so just brace yourselves. But I've prepared some words for you tonight. Last year, it was brought to light about the city's non-observance of Martin Luther King Day. My family moved to Harrisonville in 2016, and it was my assumption that city offices were closed on this holiday, as the five cities and towns I've lived previously have always observed Martin Luther King Day. Last year, I wrote a letter to the mayor and received no personal response. However, I am glad to see that the city has opted to take part in collecting food donations as a service project. This is a huge step in the right direction, and I acknowledge and I appreciate that effort. Regardless, as a member of the community, I must continue to express my disappointment and disapproval of holding city offices on Martin Luther King Day. And I am here to encourage the mayor and the board to observe this holiday in the same way that we observe the other holidays. During the June 4, 2018, board meeting, the issue of closing offices on Martin Luther King Day was brought up, and it was decided to keep offices open. This meeting revealed a lot to me, as it appeared that the board and mayor decided which holidays to observe based on hearsay from some of the staff and a committee that did not consult its staff. The issue of adding the holiday and the cost to do so was also brought up, and with good reason. The mayor reported that Harrisonville currently observes 11 holidays by closing offices. In comparing that number to other metro cities, and based on my research, Lee Summit observes nine holidays by closing offices. Raymore observes nine. Lewisburg observes nine. Interestingly, though, even though these nearby cities observe two less holidays than Harrisonville, all of them observe Martin Luther King Day by closing offices. And I assure you that I am the last person to follow all the other lemmings off the cliff. But I believe in this case that Harrisonville is in the minority for the wrong reasons. This holiday was handled in the June 4 meeting in the same way that a business would offer holidays off to its employees. The mayor reported that the city employees took the most popular holidays off, and a board member rationalized that the family holidays were chosen. The problem with this approach is that this is not a business for employees and committees to decide their days off. This is a civic issue because the observed holidays represent the city and the community. We observe holidays by closing city offices not solely for the purpose of having a day off. We do so in recognition, in observance, and in respect for that holiday. By holding offices on Dr. King's holiday, we show none of these things. By doing so, we categorize this holiday as a second-class holiday. And in doing that, we also categorize the black community, the civil rights movement, and Dr. King as second-class. There is a reason why every other metro city observes Martin Luther King Day by closing offices. It is a day set aside in observance of Dr. King's work toward racial equality and nonviolent social change. This is a holiday that was signed into law in 1983 by Republican President Ronald Reagan with bipartisan support. I'm not sure why the mayor and the board have such a strong pushback against observing Martin Luther King Day. I ask that the board put their personal objections aside and do what is needed to officially observe the holiday, and to do so as city officials. Once again, I acknowledge and I appreciate the efforts of celebrating Dr. King with your service project, but I encourage the board to fully recognize, acknowledge, and observe Martin Luther King Day by closing the city offices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Seeing no one, I will close the public participation. We will move on to the approval of the minutes. First tonight, you have the minutes from the public hearing of January 7, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Levison and a second from Alderman Dickerson for approval. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, you have the minutes from the regular meeting on January 7, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Levison for approval. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Posed? Minutes are approved. Last, we have a copy of the November 19 minutes. Alderman Reese had brought up a correction that was necessary. If you flip to the second page, it was on the ordinance for the budget. The wording was correct in the description about who voted on that item, but in the actual results, everyone was listed under the I's. Alderman Reese actually was the one A, so that has been updated and corrected. That was the only item brought up for correction, so if somebody has something else, I would entertain a motion to approve the change.
I'd like a motion to approve the change.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Bowman for approval of the change. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Make sure we have the one neighbor recorded. Moving on, Council Bill 005.
Council Bill 005, a resolution by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Optum Healthcare Solutions LLC to offer standard member access to the community center at no cost to eligible Medicare recipients and establish an effective date.
The Parks and Recreation Staff sent this over for review. We've been working on this since November. There is a, you may have heard of Silver Sneakers. There's a Silver Sneakers program, which is reduced cost for, in a benefit to senior citizens to go to the community center. It's a reduced cost for them. Then they pay back, or I think it's maybe free for them, and then we get a reduced amount paid by either Blue Cross or United Healthcare. What they've done now is there's another group that's coming around called Optum, and that's who we're looking to also sign up with, because there are a number of our seniors that belong to United Healthcare that want to use this program. They will get a reduced amount, they won't have to pay, they'll pay us a reduced amount, but it's an agreeable amount to staff, $4 per time, up to $32 a month, so up to eight times they can visit the community center. We believe this is in the best interest of the seniors, and it's been a program with Silver Sneakers that's worked very well. We think it'll work just as well with this.
Questions?
Is the Silver Sneakers being discontinued?
No, I think, we thought it was, but we've understood that it is going to continue, but this is another planned issue, an additional plan.
We have additional insurance companies that cover Silver Sneakers, but the ones that they dropped, as the city administrator said, United Healthcare, this Optum picked up that program, and other community centers are also using Silver Sneakers along with the Optum Healthcare.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
And maybe, Mr. Deal, this might be directed to you. You said, Mr. Welch, that we've been working on this since November, correct? And Attorney Fairfield, you've been working on this quite a bit also since November, correct?
I have enough, yes.
Okay. I was contacted by a constituent who is a member of this program, and her concern was that because of the delay in getting this approved, that residents or seniors are having to pay $19.41 to utilize the services of the community center and the pool. Are they going to be reimbursed for that money since the delay is on the city? Can you address that?
Yeah, I'd have to look into the exact numbers of what you're stating. I do know that one of the things that we offered, because this was taking a while, there were some additional things, illegal things, that we had not seen before with the Silver Sneakers, so it took a little bit of time. One of the things that we did is we gave away quite a few free passes for people that were saying, "Well, I'm going to go to," I think possibly Belton, you know, had this in place, because they had been approached sooner on it. So I don't know in regards to those who went ahead and just purchased probably the senior pass, I would imagine, under this in regards to how many there were. But we have not discussed reimbursement or anything such as that. But we did give quite a few free passes. But I would encourage anyone to contact me directly, because I'd be interested in the story, because there is always circumstances that we look at taking care of the customer the best we can.
I understand that.
So I would encourage them to contact us and let us evaluate and see what we can do to help.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? This is a resolution, so it just needs a motion if you'd like to approve.
May I?
I have a motion from Alderman Milner and a second from Alderman Dickerson for approval. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Make sure we have the one neighbor recorded. Moving on, Council Bill 005.
Council Bill 005, a resolution by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Optum Healthcare Solutions LLC to offer standard member access to the community center at no cost to eligible Medicare recipients and establish an effective date.
The Parks and Recreation Staff sent this over for review. We've been working on this since November. There is a, you may have heard of Silver Sneakers. There's a Silver Sneakers program, which is a reduced cost for, in a benefit to senior citizens to go to the community center. It's a reduced cost for them. Then they pay back, or I think it's maybe free for them, and then we get a reduced amount paid by either Blue Cross or United Healthcare. What they've done now is there's another group that's coming around called Optum, and that's who we're looking to also sign up with, because there are a number of our seniors that belong to United Healthcare that want to use this program. They will get a reduced amount, they won't have to pay, they'll pay us a reduced amount, but it's an agreeable amount to staff, $4 per time, up to $32 a month, so up to eight times they can visit the community center. We believe this is in the best interest of the seniors, and it's been a program with Silver Sneakers that's worked very well. We think it'll work just as well with this.
Questions?
Is the Silver Sneakers being discontinued?
No, I think, we thought it was, but we've understood that it is going to continue, but this is another planned issue, an additional plan.
We have additional insurance companies that cover Silver Sneakers, but the ones that they dropped, as the city administrator said, United Healthcare, this Optum picked up that program, and other community centers are also using Silver Sneakers along with the Optum Healthcare.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
And maybe, Mr. Deal, this might be directed to you. You said, Mr. Welch, that we've been working on this since November, correct? And Attorney Fairfield, you've been working on this quite a bit also since November, correct?
I have enough, yes.
Okay. I was contacted by a constituent who is a member of this program, and her concern was that because of the delay in getting this approved, that residents or seniors are having to pay $19.41 to utilize the services of the community center and the pool. Are they going to be reimbursed for that money since the delay is on the city? Can you address that?
Yeah, I'd have to look into the exact numbers of what you're stating. I do know that one of the things that we offered, because this was taking a while, there were some additional things, illegal things, that we had not seen before with the Silver Sneakers, so it took a little bit of time. One of the things that we did is we gave away quite a few free passes for people that were saying, "Well, I'm going to go to," I think possibly Belton, you know, had this in place, because they had been approached sooner on it. So I don't know in regards to those who went ahead and just purchased probably the senior pass, I would imagine, under this in regards to how many there were. But we have not discussed reimbursement or anything such as that. But we did give quite a few free passes. But I would encourage anyone to contact me directly, because I'd be interested in the story, because there is always circumstances that we look at taking care of the customer the best we can.
I understand that.
So I would encourage them to contact us and let us evaluate and see what we can do to help.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? This is a resolution, so it just needs a motion if you'd like to approve.
May I?
I have a motion from Alderman Milner and a second from Alderman Dickerson for approval. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and Council Bill 005, I forgot to look at my next number, become Resolution 003. Council Bill 006.
Council Bill 006, an ordinance to amend Chapter 105, Election Sections 105.035A and C, and Chapter 110, Mayor and Board of Aldermen, Section 110.020, by repealing said sections and enacting in lieu thereof new Section 105.035A and C, and Section 110.020 of the Harrisonville Municipal Board of Ordinances and establishing an effective date.
We remain aware of, and you probably got the emails, letting us know that our ordinances were not up to the current, matching the current state statutes. So we have, we took to the committee to look at this, make these changes. The changes were made by the state for election qualification. They eliminated disqualification if a candidate was in arrears for water or electric, Bill say, or any city fee for services rendered. Removed a federal misdemeanor as a nonqualifier. Changed the minimum age from 21 to 18. Some of these were done with, around 2017, I believe was the change from the state. Well, we're looking at, depends on the board's feeling, but we could do a first reading at this meeting and do a second reading at the next meeting, if you want to think about it further. But this will match what is in state statute.
And so, everything in here is in state statute?
Yes. No changes were made. One of the suggestions was that we don't require there be, you have to be in the city for a year, but you don't have to be in the ward for any length of time. You can just be in that ward, but you have to be a resident of the city. So, took it to the committee, committee said, "No, let's just leave it as is, because that's how it is in the code now, is just be in the city." But there's no time limit on how long you would have to be in the ward before you qualify.
There's a lot of circumstances that could change. Somebody being in a ward, maybe they were building a house, or, you know, waiting to buy a house. We all know that sometimes the inventory's hard to find what you're looking for, so that was one that we didn't think was pertinent, so.
Yes, because they're inside, powered by it when they file.
Agreed, agreed.
Mr. Welch, can you show me where in this ordinance it addresses the utility payment?
So it doesn't say it would be the fee. We originally wrote that, we talked about utility bills. That was one of the key things people looked at. So what they said was any fees, and that includes anything that you're in arrears with the city, because that's a fee you're paying for the water and electric.
And where is that?
It's, again, in the language that talks about any fee for city services.
Affirmation of tax and bonding requirements. Something about fees in there.
It would be under Section C, which talks about the affirmation of tax payments. It used to have in there that you had to pay city fees. That was removed from where it says, second line, any state income taxes, personal property taxes, municipal taxes, real property taxes on the place of residence as stated on the Declaration of Candidacy.
I'd like for Mr. Fairfield to look at that. I don't see anything in that paragraph that pertains to city fees.
I believe that this follows, Happy, you might recall, because I haven't looked at it last week, follows verbatim what the affirmation, there's an affirmation in the state law. So I think that our goal was to go as far as the state law went, and this does. So I believe that it matches that up. I don't believe that there's a utility fee mentioned in the affirmation under state law, but I think it's.
I think, I mean, I kind of think I see where she's going with this, is if it was in there before, it would be mentioned. The fact that it's no longer in there, they're not going, they're going to specify what would be you're affirming, so they would actually remove the language from the states. There wouldn't be anything specific about fees, if I'm understanding that correctly. It may have been in there before, but they would have removed that language, so essentially, I mean, without having the old one to look as a reference, which might be the case here, you could say, "Okay, here's what it said before, here's what it says now." They're probably not going to mention it, because it's not pertinent anymore. If they removed it, it's not going to be in their language anymore. But I see where you're going with it. You would think it would be written, but it's not, so unless we had the last one, which, again, this is an ordinance, if we want to have first reading, if you want to have the
issue I'm aware of is with a business with regards to their right to do business, if they get behind the state generally at some point in time, they'll come back and take some sort of action against you. But this is for a candidate filing for office, so it's not, it's a personal thing.
Happy, I know we discussed.
Personal thing, but if the person owns the business, you want to make sure that they're on good standing.
Was this change, wasn't this change recent with the state, I mean, in the last few years?
Last couple of years, it's 2017, I believe, when it went into effect, August of 2017. And I think we look at this as enabling legislation, so we don't do anything outside of what the state provides and what we should match in our ordinances.
Yeah, I think if you try to go.
But we can match you on our own personal level.
Well, I think.
Or our own distinction or definition.
I don't think so. No, I think you have to follow exactly what the state statute.
I think that was the complaint filed by the individual, was that we were not matching, we had those additional, those additional items were in there, as again, they, they actually made it less restrictive at the state level, and that was the argument from the individual that emailed, was that, why yours is still written that these are required, you're not matching the state, you need to update that. And again, it's an ordinance. If you would like to have a first reading, and these are things that we could clarify, we could clarify for the next one that you would like, that's not an issue.
I agree, yeah, I'd like to, if we could just.
Sure, sure. Okay. Any other questions while we have it as a topic? Okay, we will just have first reading tonight. That is it for our agenda items tonight. Alderman Committee reports, Alderman Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well. Mary, as Public Works Director, I want to just, if I have a hat, I would take it off. Please, on behalf of myself and the board, please let your staff know how much we appreciate the Aman's work in the weekend with the snowstorm, the street crew. Mr. Welch, please pass the word on to the street crew, fire, EMS, everyone was there, everyone was working, and I just want to let you know I appreciate that. Unfortunately, Alderman Reese and I had to cancel our town hall meeting also because of the storm, so that's been rescheduled for March the 2nd, and that will be the hospital's presentation, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Bachman. Alderman Reese. Alderman Milner.
I just have to, mirror Judy, I'm very thankful, and we are very, no, I wouldn't say we are lucky, but we are a lot different because we're on O.C. Valley, but my parents are on the city, and they were out for a while, and so they came to us because we had heat and air, heat and fire, and we went out, and we were able to stay warm, but we were, they did such a great job and got them back up and running and.
Did, how did O.C. Valley do, did they, I mean?
We were out for about four hours.
That's not too bad.
No, it's not too bad.
I heard a lot of good things about them, too, that they do a good job.
Yeah, I don't know if we're just lucky on the line, we very seldom.
I think it depends on what is knocked out.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, yeah.
It was, but guys, the street crew, when I went over to get them, the street crew had already been through once, so it was easily able to access or drive myself, and I appreciate that.
Very good. Alderman Dickerson.
Well, like I said, I'm very proud of the staff today. They participated in helping get canned goods for Martin Luther King Day. Gives you a real nice feeling to know that there's so many good people in town that you get to meet on a day that, you know, we chose to, since we departed on that day, we are in the service of the public, and I think what Martin Luther King did about is serving the public. And I thought it was a very good thing to do. I was a price chopper, and I watched this lady come up, and she had four bags of goods in her cart. She gave three of them to us and took one for herself. And I was really proud of the staff, and the ones had to stand outside at Walmart, it was freaking cold, and they deserve a big applause for their efforts. And also, as usual, the electric company always comes through for us. I'm sorry, some people think it didn't get best enough service back on, but listen, those guys work hard, they have, since I've been in this town, and let's keep talking.
They can only do what they can do.
He trained them, and he's made our system very good, and he deserves a lot of the credit for his foresight in building this electric system, so my hat's off to him.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Levison.
Same thing, I just really appreciate the work of all the cities. I had friends in surrounding towns that didn't have power there till Tuesday, and so, I mean, I was just very impressed, because we did, we had a lot of people that lost it, but I was out late one night, and I looked over and I could see them still working away, and it had been, I can't remember what they, I don't have a Sunday, or Saturday night, I don't know, but I was just like, wow, you guys, it's cold and you're out there, and I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
A couple of things following up on the service day. At this point, I haven't had a chance to count everything yet. We had about 400 cans of food that were dropped off, and I think it's going to be more than that once we do the final count, and about 100 boxes of packages of food, but we also collected $361, so we can give that to the food pantry and they can buy what they need and more. Also, the court case between the city and Mr. Street and the ACLU has been dismissed by federal court, so our new sign code will be in effect. Just keep that in mind of the six square feet when you put up your election signs this year.
Okay. Anything else? All right. I, too, want to take my hat off to the staff, and they did a great job in the storm. I'm pretty sure, Mr. Patterson, that no one expected this level of storm, the predictions were much smaller, otherwise I assume we would have mutual aid a little quicker, and they were here, I thought, fairly quickly.
Yeah, they won't come out until we actually have a need, so unfortunately, we can't be ready ahead of time and have them waiting, because they don't know, maybe their community's going to get hurt also.
Correct. Well, I know that contrary to popular belief, I lost power at 10 o'clock on Friday night. I'm pretty sure my neighborhood was the first to lose power, so obviously it was one of the first to get power back, so I did lose power for some time, but the crews got it back up. But I think the comments by MPA about our wards, that shows the level of service that we do have in our community. I think there are some people who are a little spoiled with how quickly we get our power back on, so when we do have a big hit, I believe we had five of our 15 circuits down, is that.
Yep, at one time.
So that's, that's a big hit all at once, and especially when you're not expecting it, so I think that they did a great job in the circumstances. I did have a few questions for you, Mr. Patterson, because I want to be sure this was clear to everyone, because I've seen comments and questions. Number one, we do have a comprehensive electric plan, do we not?
We do.
All right. Number two, we have a tree trimming program.
We have, we've had a tree trimming program since the city hired Keith Thomas.
Now, do we budget additional funds to fund outside help?
We have, the last two years, you guys have approved $250,000 a year.
And we just approved the contract for shade tree services?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the other comment I've had or questions are the priority of how power is turned back on, and I think that's, that's important for people to understand how that is addressed.
Most electric companies follow the same basic outline. I take a little issue with Casey P&L's, they say they don't hit substations till second. I don't believe that. Once your substations start to go out, you can't get individuals on until they're putting power out again. So our first is substations. We didn't lose any substations this time. After that, you look at doing your circuits. In the town of roughly 4,200 meters, we have 15 circuits. That is your best ability to get the most power on at any one time, is to keep your circuits running. If you don't keep your circuits running, it doesn't do any good to go to an individual house, or business, or convalescent home. You have to have all your circuits up and running before you can do your individuals. If you look at substations, circuits, then we go to the hospital and emergency services, being police and fire, EMS, that type of thing, and then we look at convalescent homes. And then from there, we get down to neighborhoods and individual houses and businesses and all.
Very good. Well, I know that it's, like I said, if people, thankfully it wasn't as cold as it could have been, but again, I think it's been quite a few years since we had a major power loss like that, and typically in the summer, when you get the trees bumping the lines, it's just a matter of hours maybe if that, and power's back on, so.
Well, and I do want to point this out, it wouldn't matter how well our trees were trimmed, this snow was so big, and it was extremely wet. It's one of the heaviest snows I remember us having in a long time, so even if we had all of our lines trimmed to what our standard is, we still would have lost a lot of power.
The last item tonight is, there has been questions about the brush. We have had some discussion about how we're going to address that. We have several things we need to get lined up before we can really make official decision on how we're going to attack it and when. One of the biggest things, we'll be waiting for it to thaw out and then dry out, and then people have to have time to actually get to the branches. I know the ones in my yard I haven't touched yet, I've just left them laid, but we will be getting some more information. We are well aware that there's a lot of brush, and there's a lot of people, some capable of hauling it, some not capable, so we are definitely looking at everything. I've got a lot of good questions, and I think we've got a good preliminary plan, and things have to be taken care of first before we can make anything official, but we are addressing that, and we will let everyone know as we get more things lined up and have something a little more definitive, so.
Absolutely.
That's all I have this evening. I enjoyed being out at the food drive today. It was cold, but it was, like Alderman Dickerson said, nice to see the community getting back, and I know the food pantry needs food more now than ever, so. So I hope everyone has a good evening, and.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
That's what I'm looking for. I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Milner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Good evening, everyone.